I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Batt.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that you have afforded us, Lord God, to do good government. We thank you for the opportunity of life, health, and strength. We recognize and we reverence your presence today. We thank you that our steps are ordered by you. We thank you that you know the way that we take. And so, Father God, we ask your continual blessings upon our city, your continual blessings upon our mayor, and upon the city council, and those who work in city government daily, Lord God. We ask that you will continue to bind us together, to do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We thank you, Lord God, for what you've already done. We thank you for what you're doing right now. But most of all, we thank you for what you are about to accomplish, and that your will will be done in this city and around this city. And we come in agreement now, Father God. We have confidence. We are confident through your word, whatever we ask in your name, according to your will, we are encouraged today that you will hear us and that you will answer us. So we come in agreement now that every assignment, every attack, and every attempt of the enemy to hinder or to frustrate your will and your plan is our rite of counsel. We glorify you. We praise your name. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on February the 7th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item 6, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of February 3rd through the 9th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Thank you. Item 7 is proclamations and commendations.
If I could ask Chet if you would please make your way up here and nick Hall. I want to brag on Chet a little bit, and I'll just read this, but Chet's our golf pro at Twin Bridges and does an excellent job and has been recognized by the Professional Golfers Association. He's also responsible for bringing, which tournament?
Alabama Open.
The Alabama Open to Gaston, Alabama, which is a phenomenal event, which puts heads in beds and brings a lot of tourism and a lot of exposure to Gaston. This commendation, Mr. Chet Hallman, has been a part of the Professional Golfers Association since 1993, spending his entire membership in Alabama. As a certified professional, he specializes in instruction, golf operations, and retail. Mr. Hallman has participated in several conferences and workshops throughout his time with the PGA. He has served in the section's education chairman for two separate terms and has been published in the PGA Magazine's Best Practices section. Mr. Hallman has previously been awarded the Section Merchandiser of the Year Award in 2009, the Section Professional of the Year Award in 2011, the Section Horton Smith Award in 2012, and most recently won the Professional Development Award in 2022. He is currently the general manager at our Twin Bridges Golf Club here in Gaston and has been with the city for almost eight years. We'd like to congratulate Mr. Chet Hallman for his continuous accomplishments and awards with the PGA. We'd also like to commend him for his willingness to further his education as he strongly feels is the key to growth and improvement as a PGA professional. The City of Gaston is proud to have him at our Twin Bridges Golf Course. By receiving this proclamation, you are no longer allowed to employ at any other golf course. How about that? All right. This is the award that he received from the PGA.
Oh, wow.
So we are very honored to have him here. Sir? All right. Get in here, man.
Number three. One, two, three. One, two.
Thank you, buddy. You want to say anything?
I'll be real quick. I know you've got a big agenda. We appreciate y'all's support. It's been a great eight years and looking forward to seven more before I retire.
Congratulations, Chet.
Thanks, Chet. I want to point out, Chet has brought the Alabama Open to Gaston not only once, but two years in a row. That might be unheard of in the state of Alabama. I think there was such a, probably a request for the condition the course was in and the hospitality, not only of Chet, but our entire city and Parks and Rec. I think that played a large part. And I will say, the first time that he had it, we were, I was out there playing golf, and I looked over and Chet was on a tractor cutting grass. So he's the CEO of the golf course out there, but he is not below hopping on a tractor. He's probably been on the other end of a weed eater a few times, too.
Well, you come out Saturday, you're singing with a chainsaw.
Not to rain on the parade, but one stain on Chet's career is Mayor Ford still can't break 100. So I don't know what you gotta do over there, Chet.
Come see.
That's right. Thank you. Councilman Wilson, will you come down here with me, please? So this is regarding the Beautiful Rainbow Cafe commendation, and I was going to ask Mr. Wilson to read this resolution. He told us about this at the last couple of council meetings ago, and he seemed passionate about it, as we all are. But Councilman, if you don't mind reading this, and where's our young gentleman, our scholar?
Chris?
Come on, Chris.
Come on up here, bud. I'm a sucker for stories like this, so I'm probably not going to make it through this one without getting emotional. But like I said a couple of weeks ago, man, I'm so proud of this kid and everybody that's involved with the Beautiful Rainbow program. It's just been such a success story since the day they opened their doors, and this is really an exclamation point for that entire program and the City of Gaston, the Gaston school system. So this is a mayor's commendation for you, Chris. The Beautiful Rainbow Cafe was recently recognized by Governor K. Ivey as the best K-12 work-based learning program in Alabama. Mr. Chris Underwood, who is currently a senior at Gaston City High School, has been working at the cafe and the school's co-op program. Chris is known for demonstrating leadership and mentoring the new students at the Beautiful Rainbow Cafe. He's a very talented cook, as well as a pastry chef. He's also demonstrated great perseverance and determination in obtaining the National Restaurant Association Serve Safe Manager Certification. Due to his outstanding abilities, Chris applied for admission to the Education to Accomplish Growth and Life Experiences for Success, also known as the Eagles Program at Auburn University. The Eagles Program is an exclusive post-secondary education experience for selected students with cognitive disabilities. There were 90 students who applied for the Eagles Program, and after an intensive two-day on-campus interview process, 16 were selected to move forward. Of those 16 students, only eight were chosen for admission, and our very own Chris Underwood was ranked as the number-one prospect by the Auburn faculty and staff. Recipients of the Eagles Program live on campus for two years, as well as participate in all aspects of university life, and may also take college courses from six areas of interest. They are able to work part-time jobs based on their interests, and Chris has chosen culinary arts since his goal is to become a pastry chef. We'd like to congratulate Mr. Chris Underwood for his marvelous accomplishments while being a part of the Beautiful Rainbow Cafe. We commend you and wish you much success.
Congratulations. You too, Chris. Thank you.
Awesome. Want to say something?
Yeah, you want to say something?
I'm just happy that, I'm just happy that this was a great experience for me, and I would like to thank my teacher, Mr. Chip over there.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank him. He helped me through this process, so I'd like to thank him for it.
Maybe give him a war eagle, too.
War eagle. That's good. I should have asked, is there family members? Would you please stand if you're a family member? Or thank y'all for bringing, thank you very much. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize Chip Rowan and Ms. Maness from our Board of Education. If y'all would, Ms. Maness, if you'd please stand, and Chip, if you would stand. I'd like for y'all to, look, we're here, and this is a great opportunity. I wish you would share just a little bit, Chip, and Ms. Maness, about the program. Y'all, this is like the best program in the state, maybe the best program in the country at what they do, and it was generated and thought of by these people right here. And we're so proud of y'all. We're obviously proud of Chris Underwood. And Chris, I'm an Auburn graduate, war eagle, brother, okay?
Hey, you know, Chris is about the only person who could ever get me to say war eagle.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Today, coincidentally, is Chris's day, but coincidentally, this is the sixth anniversary of the opening of Beautiful Rainbow Cafe this day.
Oh, wow.
So, and also, I just want to mention that we're having a reception in honor of Chris today at 1:30 at the cafe, and it's, we'd like to see all of you there. I sent out a bunch of emails about it. If you didn't get an email about it, it's probably because I didn't have your email address. So we'd love to see everybody come and celebrate Chris. Chris is a very exceptional student. We've had lots of wonderful students come through Beautiful Rainbow Cafe. It was chosen as the best work-based learning program in Alabama in April by the governor, and it is actually the only full-service cafe in the world that's run completely by students with significant disabilities. So we are very proud of the program. Usually, what we're looking to do is to get our students placed in employment, and many of you up here have employed some of our students. We've had over 35 students employed out of the program in different places throughout Gaston, but we wanted a different kind of post-secondary experience for Chris because he's very talented. He's, he's not, all of the students can cook everything in the cafe and do all the jobs in the cafe, but Chris has a certain flair and mindset. It was really well put in the Gaston Times that he has what we call the mind of a chef. I mean, some of you know, I've got a big ego, and I like to cook. I mean, Chris improves my recipes, so when we saw the talent and the special things that he can do, we wanted to pursue the Eagles Program at Auburn, both because of their excellent culinary skill, and Councilman Wilson has been very helpful in helping us learn about that. I think that the program at Auburn, there are others in the country, but it seems pretty obvious that the one at Auburn is the best. It is the gold standard for these kinds of university-based programs for people with disabilities. And for Chris to get admitted to the best program and to be ranked as the best student is a great honor, but it's a reflection on him and his abilities and his wonderful family who have been so supportive. We're going to need community support for Chris, and so Ms. Maness, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you. Yes, and I'd like to, first of all, thank the City of Gaston for always being a supporter of Gaston City Schools and for Beautiful Rainbow. As Chip stated, Chris is going to need a lot of support. Councilman Wilson expressed last week that Chris was among the best of students with disabilities in the country, parents with extreme wealth, and Chris's family was there, his mom and dad, to support him. It takes a village to support Chris. And so we're asking the City of Gaston and the community to come out, support Chris. We have a Gaston City Schools Foundation, and on that foundation, we're going to set aside a component for Chris, because even though he's received scholarships, there's still some additional funding that's going to be required for him over these next two years. So right now, our short-term goal is to raise at least $5,000 by the end of February, which is a short amount of time, just to assist them with some of his basic needs. So we're asking you all to support. This is a time to think about your taxes for the upcoming year and tax credits, so that would be a great way to make a difference in the life of this young man and our Gaston City Schools. And once again, like I said, thank you so much for your support. Please come out this afternoon and support Chris and the Gaston City Schools in celebrating him today, and war eagle.
War eagle.
And Ms. Maness, I just want to add to that, in addition to, of course, my personal commitments and some of the others in the community. When I shared this story on social media, I have received commitments and pledges for support for Chris from not only county commissioners and other elected officials around the state of Alabama, but fraternity brothers of mine from all over the state of Alabama that reached out to me personally and said, whatever it takes, you let me know. So if you guys can share some sort of link or something with me so that I can circulate that to the dozens of people that reached out to me, there's no doubt in my mind we'll hit that goal.
We'll have that ready today at the celebration for Chris at the cafe.
Fantastic. See y'all later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I might, just want to encourage Chris, continue to encourage Chris and his family. His relative of mine, Chris, you have a good standard to set there. Also, you have, I want to mention our director of the library, just right across the street, you have a legacy to live up to, and that's Mr. Dr. Clarence Underwood, who is my uncle. We haven't quite put us together how we're related yet, but you have a legacy to look up to, and you're climbing that ladder very well. So I want to encourage you to continue on, stay focused, and as you have great family support, grandmother beside you, mother, father, keep it close, tight-knit, and just know that your family supports you as well. We'll give Dr. Clarence Underwood a call. Maybe he can talk to you when we come to your event later this afternoon, and I think that $5,000 won't be a problem at all.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. All right, we'll move on to item number eight. This is unfinished business. Item 8A is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 704 Clare Street in District 2. This resolution was tabled for seven days on February the 7th. There is a recommendation from the building official to adopt the resolution. What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 8B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 709 Hooks Lake Road in District 2. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on January the 10th. There is a recommendation from the building office to adopt the resolution. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I went and looked at this property, and it appears that the owners have made an investment. There's brand-new material on the ground, panels for the roof. The roof has been prepped for this particular property, so thank you, Mr. Harbison, for what you shared this morning. So I want to ask for another table on this, since they've made an investment, to try to bring this up to par.
Second. All right. Second. Is there any discussion?
Was there a timeframe I didn't?
I want to request another 30-day table and just take a look on it and see what kind of progress they're making on it. Thank you.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an additional 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Item 8C, no council action will be necessary regarding the resolution on 2919 1/2 Sheahan Avenue in District 6. The nuisance has been abated by the owner. Item 9 on the agenda, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of, a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 124 Washington Street in District 3, Alicia Nappier being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves a burned structure. We filed it in July of 2022. There've been very few improvements. There are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Brian, is, so it's not a total burn, right? It's what, one room or something like that?
Well, the fire department listed it as 70% damage. Normally, when it hits 50% or higher, we have to work it as a burn case, so there's considerable damage inside, and I think there was some through-the-roof damage, too, you can see from the back.
So haven't heard from their owners?
No, haven't heard of work.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
I'm going to ask for a seven-day table.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for seven days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for seven days.
Item 10, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 2106 Hill Avenue in District 6, Leon and Brenda Brown being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involved a burned structure. It has been torn down by the owner, but sitting there, been sitting there like that for months. We're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second. Yeah. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11, our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien against property located at 323 Roseland Drive in District 2, state of Alabama, possible redemption rights of Kim Parker, DBA The Parker Company, and Sterling Trust Company for benefit of WR Erickson IRA being the last known owners. This is for demolition work that has already been performed, and the amount is $2,845. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I'm just trying to get some clarity on this one. I actually went out and looked at this property, of course. I wasn't really sure if the city collected money for work that's actually already been done on this property.
That's correct. Right, Mr. Harbison, we've.
Collecting the funds now. Is that correct?
Well, it wasn't.
Brian, go ahead.
There was no structure. When I looked at this property, it wasn't a structure there. I was here last week, just want to be clear that basically the city is collecting the funds for work that's already been done. It looks like it was done a long time ago. All the grass is in place.
That's what this resolution's for today, just to assess the lien for the work that's already been done.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
What we'll do, Councilman Smith, typically is we'll actually assign a lien to the property for the amount that the city incurred to demo it. So now, if the property ever sells in the future, there'll be a lien against that property, and they'll have to satisfy that with the city before they get a clear title to the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, what is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion that we assess the lien against this property.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution rejecting bids for bid number 3496 for Pol barn construction. The engineering director has recommended rejection due to insufficient funding in place to complete the project at the bid prices received. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution granting permanent and temporary construction easement to Spire Alabama Incorporated. This is related to the construction of natural gas lines off of Rainbow Drive between the McDonald's and Arby's restaurants. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Incorporated. This is for subsurface exploration and materials report for the rehabilitation of Hope Street from Meagan Boulevard to Goodyear Avenue, and the amount is $22,285. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 15 is a resolution authorizing agreement with TTL Incorporated. This is to provide an environmental site assessment for potential acquisition of property located at the intersection of Highway 411 and Riley Street, and the amount is $2,200. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with ALDOT. This is a preliminary engineering and construction agreement for intersection improvements at US 278, US 431, and Hood Avenue. The total estimated project cost is $1,514,881 and is 80% funded by an Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation and Improvement Program II grant. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just to drive home the point, Mr. President, 80% of it's being paid by the state. The city's paying for 20%.
I'm going to ask Heath Williamson. Heath, this is at Meagan Boulevard there, close to the old, I mean, by the railroad tracks that go across Meagan. Is that right?
No, sir, this is the other end. This is right next to the Meagan Bridge, the intersection of Hood Avenue.
Right in front of Walgreens there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
This is the addition of the turn lanes.
Yeah, Hood Avenue.
Heading onto Hood Avenue.
All right, the turn lanes, okay, thank you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 17 is a resolution authorizing agreement with ALDOT. This is for a federal aid rail highway crossing improvement project. I think this is the one I'm thinking of. On US 431, US 278 at Sixth Street North. The total estimated project cost is $519,243.04. It is 90% funded by federal Section 130 funds. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Is there any discussion? Heath, this is the one I was, so I was premature in my question, but.
You're correct. This is the railroad car.
Okay. All right, this is at Meagan Boulevard, so we seem to get a lot of play on that, that that is a bad, bad stretch you're over. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 18 is a resolution accepting conveyance of property located in the 1600 block of East Broad Street. The owner, Robert C. Makin, has offered to donate the property to the city. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have first readings. Number 19 is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 3610 Georgia Avenue in District 6. William Graves has offered $1,000 for the property. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 20 is another ordinance authorizing sale of property located at 1308 Airport Industrial Drive in District 6. Kelly Auto Auction LLC has shown interest in purchasing the property in the amount of $250,000, and this authorizes the mayor to negotiate and consummate the sale of the property. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote and the council will vote on it next week.
Mayor Ford?
Mr. President, this is relocating a business that's not currently in the city of Gadsden, which will bring in approximately 40 to 50 jobs during the auction and other weeks, so it'll bring in a lot of sales tax increase to our city. So we want to thank them for working with us and relocating this business to our area.
Good job, thank you. I see Mr. Hooks is out there today. Thank you, Mr. Hook, for your work, and also some others there, the Kelly Auto Auction folks.
Ms. Dr. Joe... Doctor General, Joe General. Yeah, would y'all stand up so they could see you, please? But they are currently moving in, and if you're looking for a veterinarian, he's on the left, so... The brains is on the right.
All right. Well, thank you very much. That's... I think I know where your current location is, and we welcome you folks to Gadsden. Thank you for choosing to come to Gadsden. Proud to have you. All right. Item 21 is new business. I believe we have a couple.
Mr. President, and just to make sure, I know that we've got the grant agreement, but the other one was for the cab and chassis for the Public Works Department, right?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Mr. President, I have two... Well, two resolutions here that have been requested for immediate consideration. One of them is from the fleet, and one of them is from the legal department. Ms. Nelson, would it be possible for us to ask for consent for both of these at the same time, or do I need to do them one by one?
That's fine with me if it's acceptable to the council.
Is that okay with you, Mr. President?
That's fine with me. I'm good to go.
I'd ask for us to suspend the rules today for immediate consideration of both of these resolutions.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both resolutions today as items of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Okay. Before I move to adopt, I'll just explain what these two are. One of these is awarding a bid to Ronnie Watkins Ford for a 2022 Ford F-450 cab and chassis. For, again, the fleet department's requesting this for Public Works that'll assist in their, in their grass-cutting efforts throughout the city. Total cost of that to Ronnie Watkins Ford is $46,022.50. The second resolution is requested from the legal department to enter into an agreement with Allo Grants LLC, doing business as simple grants. You guys, this is directly relevant, but the last couple of things we voted on here were situations where we received federal grant dollars to fund major projects in the city. One of them, the federal government provided 90% of the funding, and we matched 10% of the funding. Another one was where the state provided 80% of the funding, and we provide 20%. This is really kind of an extension of that same idea. There's a lot of federal and state grants all over the country that the city of Gadsden qualifies for. We don't currently have a full-time grant-writing department here in Gadsden, so what this does is enters into an agreement with a third-party group here, and they have offices here in Alabama and around the country that specialize in identifying grants that the city could qualify for and helping us in writing those grants and submitting the applications for those grants. And then when we receive those grants, in administrator... Administering them so that we're following all the rules of the grant, and we're using the money the way we're supposed to. So this could potentially result in millions, several millions of dollars in grant funds for the city of Gadsden. And just to be overly clear, grant means you don't pay it back. They just give it to you. So I think this is a great program, and so having said that, I would ask that we move to adopt both of these resolutions, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt both.
Item 22 is department reports, committees, and boards. Do you have any of those? I'm going to say it right this week, Josh. I didn't... I'm not going to call you Jeff again. I hope, at least not today, anyway. This is Josh Tanner with the EMA.
I didn't harbor any ill will about it, so... I know everybody is suffering from what we used to call at church pew fatigue. So I'm going to make our report as quick as possible. Severe weather chance tomorrow night, beginning about midday. We'll go overnight into Thursday through about lunchtime. National Weather Service has placed us on a 2 to 2 out of 5 risk scale. Don't want to forget about COVID. It's still out there. We've not added any cases in the state over about the last week and a half or so. The current case rate for the state is 1,503, I believe. The one thing that you probably have been hearing a lot about on the news has been the Norwalk virus or the noroviruses. That's a fancy way of saying the stomach bug. They have seen... The CDC has seen a 30% increase in that number over last year's number. And then last but not least, so lest I get in trouble, 26 years ago, my wife and I spent our first Valentines together. And me being the forward-thinking emergency manager that I am, we did it on the 15th. The wedding was on the 15th. So I've never forgotten an anniversary, ever, because Valentine's Day was always the day before. So she's in bed under the weather, but, Keon, thank you for being my true north and putting up with my shenanigans for 26 years. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Congratulations, first of all.
Thank you.
And I know you come all the time with information that we need to hear but don't necessarily want to hear, but we'll all keep our weather radios tuned in, and we'll be on the lookout.
Well, it's like I always tell folks, and I told the mayor the same thing. You may not like what I got to say, but I'm going to give you the truth. You know? I'm going to make sure that what you hear from me is going to be the truth, because at the end of the day, that's all I got, is character and integrity.
That's right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. This is item 23, is remarks by mayor and council. Mayor Ford?
I'm going to go real quick in respect of everybody's time. I want to tell you some things that's happening. Museum of Art is working with our staff to decorate City Hall with photos showcasing Gadsden and highlighting our diversity. Thank you for increasing the trash and litter fines to the council. City will offer delinquent garbage fee amnesty week, February 27 through March the 14th. There'll be more details about that coming up. We have instructed Public Works to work with us. They are putting the recycling trailers back out in the community like they did prior to COVID. We're working with local businesses, a lot of businesses. It saves them money, so we're looking for that, and that is a profitable business for us, the cardboard industry. We had great meetings in DC, and I'll say that in just a second, but yesterday Comprehensive Plan was here all day. I think everybody on the council got to meet with them. We rode around with them, again, in a bus, because my back is still hurting. And we had a meeting last night to about 6:00 with community leaders, and thank you all for your input. We need everybody's input. To let you all know about DC, we went to DC. We had Brett Johnson, Rod Scott, David Hooks, and Jason Harper, and then William Parker, who's Congressman Sewell's person. We made a lot of good visits, and I want to thank the staff for what they did, and Jason was... Did a phenomenal job. We met with the EDA, U.S. Department of Commerce, with Mr. Brian Borlik. We met with the Department of Housing and Urban Development. These are all the directors, which is amazing, because we'd sit down, and they'd present to us Gadsden, Alabama, so it was just phenomenal to what they already knew about us. We met with the U.S. Department of Transportation. We met with Congressman Dale Strong's office, Congressman Mike Rogers, Chief of Staff, about the airport. We met with the Federal Aviation, the Acting Deputy Associate, and our whole team from the Northeast Alabama Airport, and we got a lot of great information we're about to capitalize on. We met with Senator Manchin's wife, Gail Manchin, Appalachian Regional Council, about our trails, making Gadsden a walkable city, the Falls area and downtown, and then in some areas in our lower-income districts about some opportunities we could have for grants there. We met with Congressman Attarhold, his Chief of Staff, and then we took them to dinner. Senator Tommy Tuberville. We had great meetings with him about the Ray's Grant with Broad Street Bridge. Then we met with Senator Katie Britt, and then we hit the road. And we had a very packed... We left at 3:00 AM in the morning from Gadsden, Alabama, got to the airport, took off, and we had meetings every two hours. And it was the first time, I think, in a long time that we've had a presence up there. The last few years, I think Congressman Attarhold instructed us, we have received a total in five years, $260,000. And I will be very disappointed if we get anything less of $5 million in the next budget, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all, your efforts, and the team that went. It's... I know there will be a lot of fruit come from that trip. Look very forward to that. Councilman Robinson, can we start on your end? I think Councilman Latham is engaged in conversation down there.
Yes, Mr. President, as I opened my chocolate there.
Oh, you got chocolate?
Yes. Did you not get any down there? Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Yeah, just another great day of council work and government work, and just want to tell everybody I appreciate everything you all do, and very excited about all the projects going on in Knocklough Falls. I want to thank Regina Ford and Tony Wallace for coming to speak to us about the... My mind just went blank. They got master gardeners up there. I think that's going to be a great additive to Knocklough Falls if we can get all that done, and just looking forward to everything. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Congratulations, Chris Underwood, again. Really proud of you, man, and happy Valentine's Day to my smoking hot fox of a wife, Jessica Wilson.
Councilman Avery?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Also, I want to thank everyone that came out to District 3 meeting on last Tuesday from department representatives and Councilwoman Minatra, Councilman... Councilwoman Latham on the one before that, and all of the District 3 residents. This Saturday, from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM, if I'm not mistaken, it is Pancake Day. So go out and support the Quanis Club on that event this Saturday, 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. $5 is the meal. Today, Gadsden State Community College HBCU Campus on Valley Street had the White House Initiative. I think they're still there. I was there earlier this morning. A great number of people from representatives from all over the state of Alabama, as well as, I think, some Florida State could have been there, some other ones out of town was there as well, so, and some White House folks are also there. So I wanted to thank Gadsden State and Dr. ... And Director for the invite. Gadsden State also has a Black History Program. February 22, from 12:30 to 1:30, they are inviting the community out for that event, which will be held at the Valley Street Campus along with the collaboration of Gadsden Job Corps. Also, Carver Community Revitalization Committee on February the 25th will be hosting their Black History Program, Black History Celebration at 5:00 PM. And the speaker is none other than Ms. Ruth Moffett of the mayor's office, and a special guest out of Off the Hill, which is Alabama A&amp;M University Mass Choir, as well as some local acts also. I want to continue to send condolences and prayers for Mr. Fred Carter, his family, to Carter's Fish, as they will memorialize their son at Gadsden City School this Saturday. Also, a prayer request out for Ms. Shalonda Jelks, as well as contribution help is being asked, as she has lost her, I think, his eight-month-year-old son through heart congestion illness. So again, continue his prayers, and thank you all. Happy Valentine.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Smith, welcome back.
Glad to be back. Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say thank you to Mayor Ford. Can't believe it's only been three months for all that you're doing and the leadership. Thank you, President Beck, and the council, and to all you that work at City Hall. We appreciate you. Thank you so very much. Bless you.
Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President Beck. Let me say happy Valentine's to everyone. I want to again congratulate Chris on his awesome accomplishment and those who worked with him. Thank you, Tanner, Josh Tanner. Congratulations on 26 years of marriage. Thank you for the update, for the weather, but thank you. You said two things that's important, character and integrity. And if we can do government on those two things, regardless to what has happened in the past, but move forward on those things, Gadsden will see and experience a much brighter day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Latham. I just want to announce, I am having a District 4 community meeting this Thursday at 6:00 at the Yer Brown Elementary School Lunchroom. It's open to all residents, especially you in District 4. We had a traffic study done on Country Club Drive and Wildhaven Circle at the request of many residents, and that's going to be the main topic of the meeting, but there will be other items discussed. We're always open. We'll have various city officials there. Mayor Ford, I hope you're able to come and join us. It's right down the street from your house. You could almost walk, so we look forward to having you there. You know, with the advent of inclement weather, we're watching that, and if it's going to be really, really bad, then we'll just have to postpone. Got our fingers crossed that that 2 kind of comes down to a 1, and then it's just rain, and we'll just get our umbrellas and hope I don't get all my hair wet when I walk in and out, so... Also, want to... Want to... Also, just, you've got to love Chris Underwood. What a great story. I mean, number one in the whole country, and kids... Councilman Wilson said, these folks... The competition was from all over the country to come to Auburn's culinary program, and he was ranked the... He was ranked the very best.